Bye, this is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Thank you for being patient. We just came out of executive session. It's taking a little bit to set up. President or myself, President Bumpus, we have Vice President Campbell, Director Barnes, Director Ed Scorn, Director Whitfield, we have Student Representative Sofia Willett, and Myron Robinson will be here a little late. We have Superintendent Woodward, District Leadership Team, District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda, which is also available on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues, either in workshops, which are also open public meetings, or in earlier meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.04, review of the agenda. There are no late items added to the agenda. So Agenda Item 2.05, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated, the agenda dated March 24th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda dated 3/24/25. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 5 to 0. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, we have Staff Recognition, Employees of the Month for February.
All right, for the Classified Employee of the Month, we have Camille House, Receptionist and Student Services Support at District Administration Office. Congratulations, Camille. So core value exemplified is excellence. Camille is an absolute treasure to the Monroe School District. She embodies warmth, professionalism, and a true commitment to exceptional service in every interaction. First time I have that. She goes above and beyond to ensure that every visitor in this office feels genuinely welcomed and supported. Those who call the office not only receive the information they need, but also feel valued, and her Camille's dedication to outstanding customer service sets a shining example for all employees in demonstrating the importance of kindness, attentiveness, and respect in building strong relationships. One interaction at a time, Camille is strengthening the district's reputation and fostering a positive, welcoming environment for everyone she encounters. She's truly deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Camille, and thank you. All right, and for our Certified Employee of the Month, we have Sarah Foster. Thank you, Sarah. She is a teacher at Monroe High School. And the core value highlighted is student-centered. Sarah Foster absolutely deserves to be nominated for this award. She has consistently demonstrated an unwavering commitment to her students, her colleagues, and the entire district. Sarah's organizational skills are unmatched, which is obvious when you walk into her classroom. Her lesson plans are both dynamic and thoughtful, and she effortlessly adapts to meet the diverse needs of her students, whether guiding them through complex historical events or fostering critical thinking. Sarah consistently makes history come alive in a way that is both memorable and impactful. Beyond her organizational prowess, Sarah has an exceptional ability to relate to her students. She connects with them on a personal level, creating a classroom environment that is warm, inclusive, and respectful. Her rapport with them extends beyond the classroom, and her influence often lasts far beyond graduation. In addition to her remarkable teaching skills, Sarah's collegiality stands out as a true asset to the district, and she's an absolute joy to work with. She's never too busy to offer support or guidance. She even took time to help me fix my Canvas page last week while she was grading finals. The team atmosphere she fosters among her colleagues helps to create a district-wide sense of unity and growth. Although Sarah is far too humble to even seek recognition for her work, I believe she is more than deserving of this award. Her unwavering dedication to her students, her colleagues, and the Monroe School District exemplifies the very qualities we strive to celebrate with the honor roll. It is an honor to work alongside her, and I can think of no one more deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you, Director Ed Scorn. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.02, we have honoring our education support professionals.
All right, March 10th to the 14th was our annual recognition of educational support professionals, also known as our classified staff, where we take time to celebrate and thank these employees for the critical role they play in our district's success. Our education support professionals are involved in nearly every aspect of education, for maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, assisting in the classroom, supporting special education, multilingual learners, and opportunity gap students, providing IT and media services, handling administrative support functions, working in the district office, ensuring safe transportation, excuse me, creating a secure and healthy environment, and so much more. In the Monroe School District, these dedicated, hard-working employees are the backbone of our education system. They deserve recognition and gratitude for the outstanding work they do to support all of our students. On behalf of the School Board and District Leadership Team, I'd like to sincerely thank all of our education support professionals. We have invited the leaders of our classified labor unions tonight. As I call your name, please come up and accept a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the staff you represent. President Stephanie Preston of the Public School Employees Office Professionals. Yeah. Thank you, Stephanie, and the team that you lead. We appreciate you guys. Stephanie, you and I don't have an agreement. That is true. Holy dis triple. And President Nancy Ivy of the Public School Employees. Come on up, Nancy. Thank you, Nancy, for the team that you lead as well. Appreciate you guys.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.03, we have Student Representatives, and we have Miss Sofia Willett.
Okay, so all spring sports have either had their first games or meets, and so the next ones to follow, the Boys varsity baseball team has a game today that started out four against Snohomish at Snohomish, and then the Girls varsity softball team also had a game today that started at 4:30 against Lake Stevens at Lake Stevens. And then the next varsity boys soccer game is at 7:30 tomorrow at Marysville Pilchuck. And then congrats to HQ, who won their fourth state championship, and they will be moving on to Nationals. And then spring break is around the corner with only nine days of school left.
Any questions for Sofia? Thank you for that, Sofia. Okay, Agenda Item 3.04, we have public comment. Public comment forms received after the meeting has started will be saved for the following meeting. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is the policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward if they complain about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement or disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targeted, protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As the board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. All right, first up, hey Heather.
Hello, I think I might be the only one. Yeah, so my name is Heather Young, and I am still the proud parent of two boys in the district. I wanted to speak to you briefly about the adoption of Policy 2415, the Performance-Based Pathway for High School Graduation. I absolutely love that we're doing this, but I have a couple of things I'd love for you to pay attention to. This is the second reading, so I understand it's anticipated that you'll be taking a vote on this tonight. I'd like to call to your attention that the WASDA language is in conflict with the RCW. I'm, it should be pretty easy to fix that. The WASDA language states that the product created by the student based on the learning experience must demonstrate that the student has met the learning standards in English Language Arts or Math, whereas the RCW states and Math, so it needs to be both according to the RCW. I suspect that was a typo on WASDA's part, but it hasn't been caught, so calling it out here. Additionally, when I look at the test scores in the district over the last 10 years, the highest score for ELA has been 60%. The highest score for math has been 47%, and yet the graduations rate has been as high as 90%. So it seems like there's a disconnect between the proficiency that's demonstrated in ELA and math versus the number of students that are receiving diplomas. And what I would like to understand as you move forward with this policy is how are you going to ensure that we are not continuing to graduate students who have not demonstrated a proficiency when you're removing the testing that goes along with it with this pathway? So what safeguards are you putting in place? Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, Agenda Item 3.05, we have grants and donations, and we have our student rep, Sofia, helping us out with that tonight.
Okay, do I just like read them off? Okay, so the Pilchuck Audubon Society has donated a $500 monetary grant for the sole and express purpose of a classroom conservation project as described in the Zale Sky Classroom Conservation Grant Application for Christina who's just goes at Sky Valley Education Center. The Boeing Black Bond Giving Fund has donated $1,000 to the Monroe High School. And then Tony and Lynn Bulk donated $4,000 for the sole and express purpose of the Lynn G Bulk Scholarship Funding, providing two $2,000 scholarships for staff pursuing a teaching degree, spring of '25 for the Monroe School District. Jersey Mike Subs of Monroe donated 10 free subcards for staff appreciation. MultiPTO has donated $2,529.79 for the sole and express purpose of emergency stock for the school. The Everest Trading Corporation has donated 30 backpacks for students in need. The Firelands PTA has donated $3,000 for the sole and express purpose of supporting the students of Firelands Elementary for student enrichment. The Monroe Public Schools Foundation via the previous Transportation Department coat drive has donated 65 coats for students in need. The Monroe Public Schools Foundation has donated 95 shoes for students in need from a previous grant. And then the Snohomish First Pride Christian has donated $300 for the sole and express purpose of general funds for the cooking club.
Thank you so much, Sofia. That was perfect. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item, we have 4.01, Consideration of Adoption of Policy 2415, Performance-Based Pathway for High School Graduation, and this is our second reading. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the adoption of Policy 2415, Performance-Based Pathway for High School Graduation.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the adoption of Policy 2415, Performance-Based Pathway for High School Graduation Discussion.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just based on the information from public comment, just because that was called out. Superintendent Woodward, you or your team, when I'm reading the third bullet point, which was kind of was brought up, the product created by a student-based learning experience that must be demonstrated, the student has met, learning standards in English Language Arts or Math, and then it goes on to the next bullet point, the evaluation, is that or there because it, certain students are doing certain pathways, either for English Language Arts, or they're doing pathways for math?
Yes, that's my understanding.
That makes sense, right? Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, the Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. All right, Agenda Item 5.08, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated March 24th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the consent data, or consent agenda dated March 24th, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 5 to 0. Agenda Item 6.01, we have Superintendent update.
All right, and with that graduation pathway, we'll review it, and I'll bring it back if we need to make an adjustment on that. Okay, so Jesse. All right, that's okay. No, all good. So I do want to say thank you. I know I thank our principals, probably not enough, and our office staff, and our teachers as far as really helping us make attendance a priority this school year. And they do so many really cool and motivating things for our students to celebrate and recognize great attendance. So I think during one of our board visits, we did get to see a 30-second dance party, didn't we, somewhere? So we've got another one, so check out the screen, especially watch Mr. Presley, and he getting into it. So let's go ahead and play that, Jess.
Whoa, that was awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
You hear the little kid after Jeff says that. He's like, yeah. So I mean, that's happening every day in our schools, that you saw Miss Alvarez and and Jeff going around with with the 30-second dance party button, and and I think it might be happening in all of our schools, just because our principals obviously learn from one another, and and it's kind of spread like wildfire. So good stuff there. So I want you to take a look at our daily average attendance trends, and Jeremiah, you brought this up last time and asked that I bring it back. So just take a, I'll give you a minute just to check out our year-over-year monthly comparison, and curious what you noticed.
Well, that was one of my questions, was really looking at January and February's data. Obviously, we're still in March, and we're not quite done, but already up, but just the the February, that was what I was wondering if it dropped, but it's not super significant with, I know, a lot of flu cases. My daughter actually just sprained her wrist roller skating this weekend, and we were in the urgent care today, and they even said they're still having spiked numbers of flu cases. It was an hour and a half wait. Wow. We didn't end up staying at that urgent care we got. We went and got an X-ray somewhere else. But the point was, is that that was here in Monroe, just overwhelmed still, a lot of sickness going around, and I knew that we had several of our schools saying they had literally hundreds of kids out at each school, not hundreds in the district, but hundreds at each building.
Yeah, so you can see.
Still not much of a drop. Like, it's still better than 2023.
Yeah, and I missed spoke last time. I thought we were actually higher than that. So we did drop, but if you look at, since the beginning of 2024, month over month, it's improved. We had a streak of however many, you know, 15, 16 months in a row. So again, a real testament to our staff. I am going to send out a video message this, our week, to our families, and really talking about that, that kind of the delicate balance as far as, you know, we do not want kids to come to school sick, of course, but we want our students to attend regularly because it makes a big difference in their learning, et cetera. So I want to push that out and definitely thank our parents as well, and I definitely, at this rate, if you can hit the next one, Jesse, as far as our chronically absent numbers and conversely, our regular attendance numbers, you can see at this point in the year, those students that have 12-plus absences are on track to be chronically absent. That number is a lower percentage than last year at this time, and just look at Monroe High School as an example. One year ago, they had 69 more students with 12 or more absences at this point in the year. So it's, they're making a difference, all the work that they're doing, connecting with families, and checking in on kids, and making phone calls home, and keeping it positive, and and so I just really appreciate those efforts. We, again, just a reminder, our kind of theory of action, if you will, is that if we can get kids to attend more, student learning is going to increase, and we're seeing some promising movements there. So the next slide is our, okay, so this is our iReady District Quadrant Growth Chart for Mathematics. And this was, let's see, during the winter session. So as a reminder, we do iReady Fall, Winter, and Spring, and you, if you look at the, each one of those little dots represent a school in the district. So the majority of our schools are in the top half of that chart, which means that 50 line that you see going across a horizontal line, if the dot or the school is above that line, it means they are, they have had high growth between fall and winter. That's a good thing, is we really need high growth if we're going to get more of our students up to grade level standard. So that's imperative for us. The one on the bottom there, it's kind of a, I didn't know how to take that dot off, but that's Sky Valley. It shouldn't really be on there, because that only represents like six or seven kids. So Sky Valley, like, I don't, it's just, it's optional, right? So that's, it's not a big enough N size to be statistically significant. It is kind of funny that that one that's right in the crosshairs there, there's, that's basically right on the average for growth and achievement. So we really want everybody up in that far-right corner, high performance and high growth, if possible, but at the very least, as long as we're seeing, you know, every school should be above that 50% line, meaning it's high growth. So it's kind of interesting. For mathematics, there's not a very big spread when it comes to growth. Everyone's kind of in the same wheelhouse, if you will. Obviously, there's differences when it comes to performance up against the national norms, but check out reading. Reading, go to the next one, please, Jesse. Reading has a big stretch, lots more growth, and there's some positive outliers there. So, so as you can imagine, we're digging in with those schools that are getting just like crazy growth. That top one up there, very top, that's Park Place for reading, as measured by iReady. The one right below it, to the right, that's Sky Valley, again, that's a small N size, and the one right below that is Hidden River. I, at our last principal meeting, we talked a bit about, you know, what could be causing such high growth, and Christie shared a bit, and Christie Hilson, and it was really cool. She is very modest, of course, but she deflected a lot of the questions on to Julio, our new assistant principal, who's really been taking the lead at Park Place on, when it comes to iReady and and use of the different, there's a part of iReady called My Path, where students are basically practicing at their level. It's dialed in, it differentiates kind of for you, if you will. So this is great. There's a lot to learn. It's, it's definitely, we'd like to see mathematics like that. So as you can imagine, we're digging into math and asking the question, well, why aren't we experiencing similar growth in math? And Jen and I, I won't put you on the spot, I'll just say Jen and I had a great conversation the other day, and we talked a little bit about our current curriculum. And we were wanting to crosswalk our current curriculum in mathematics with a couple of things. One, when students take the SBACK test at the end of the year, does our curriculum allow for practice in the kinds of ways that they're going to be asked to demonstrate their knowledge on the SBACK? We have some questions there. Is it in alignment with this kind of assessment, or is there something that we could tweak to get different results? So again, this is just digging in. I can tell you, my second year here, I'm getting to understand iReady a little bit more, and the data sets that we have to help inform our practice, and I think we've barely hit our stride as a system on using iReady to inform day-to-day practice when it comes to a teacher, generally speaking, using that information to really hone in on what kids can and cannot do to differentiate for them. So I'm encouraged in some ways, because I think if we, I'm confident if we build out our, kind of our assessment literacy, if you will, for our teachers, and we really train them up on how to use this data, we're going, they're going to be able to adjust their practices in such a way that'll have a bigger impact on student learning. So, so that's cool. And then the only other thing I'll say about this particular slide is I've got another chart that one of our toses is helping me with, helping us with, I should say, that we can look at every single classroom in the district, and much like this quadrant chart, instead of just looking at schools, we can see every single class, so we can start working with those teachers that are positive outliers to find out how do we can scale that practice rate. And there's a lot of good to celebrate there for sure as well, and there's a lot we can learn from in-house. Okay, next slide. Thanks, Jesse. So this one is kind of an interesting slide, again, tied to iReady. This is just the iReady proficiency projection chart, and this tool is used during the winter assessment window that helps us forecast student performance on our end-of-year state assessment. So based on this kind of mid-year diagnostic, we can identify which students are on track, and which students need, need some additional support to get up to grade, grade level. From a positive standpoint, we're trending upward compared to last year's projected proficiency levels in reading. I haven't done this for mathematics yet, and so last year, about roughly, the top right, you can't see it very well, roughly half of our students were right below the state average in ELA slash reading at the end of the year. If the top bar chart up there shows that if our students showed no additional growth between winter and when the test is done, they would still, 47% of our students would be proficient. Clearly, they're going to show growth between winter and the end of the year. If all of our students achieved typical growth, which they don't, this suggests that we would hit about 53%, which would be above where we were at last year. Now, there's a little caveat here with these numbers, and the title, it says, without Monroe High School, because they don't take iReady. Monroe High School tends to Monroe High School tends to raise our average a bit because they're, they're typically scoring like around the sixty percent of their kids at standard in tenth grade. So that's a long ways of saying we're on a positive track this school year relative to, to last year. And teachers have a, you can look at your class the same way, just, just your, say you have twenty five students, you can get the same chart and see which students are level one, which students are level two, three and four, so on and so forth. And the conversation that I had with our principals at our last meeting was just learning more about what they're doing kid by kid, skill by skill to get to accelerate growth between now and the end of the school year. So we had that conversation about, okay, when does this school year end? Does it end when the Sback's done? Right? We did, it's like, no, because we still have a solid four or five weeks of school that we could accelerate student learning, so they enter the, the summer on a really positive footing. And and realistically, it's about student learning and it's about student hope. It's about kids being hopeful and feeling good about themselves and being on grade level and so while we're winding up the school year, what I appreciate about our principals and our staff is there's just a sense of urgency around, let's, let's, let's make sure our schools are wonderful places for kids and also let's just keep our feet on the accelerator pedal and do great work all the way through to the finish line this year, so. So yeah, we're, we're on, on a good track and lots of good work going on. To Wednesday, you know, the great, great question, kinds of questions y'all ask as well, how, how are we going to get more students at grade level quicker than we are now? You saw the, the collaborative team, fourth grade team from Frank Wagner last time. Wednesday, if you're available at eight and you'd like to go watch their team to have a data conversation between about eight and probably eight thirty or so, they're looking at their common form and, common formative assessment data and, and their commery notes. How did we do? How did you do? How did I do? What can I learn from you? How do we need to shift kids around to make sure that we can hit, hit them where they are skill deficit or, or where we need to deepen their learning or understanding? So that's how we're going to get there, that, that what those ladies that came and presented, having those deep level conversations about improving practice and then applying what they're learning from each other, that's how we're going to get more students at, at grade level. So if you want to come with me, eight o'clock, meet me in the front and text me your favorite coffee. I'll even bring you, like, get your coffee for you and come watch some great work. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Woodward. Okay. Agenda item seven point zero one, we have board reports and or comments. Director Barnes?
Okay, well, first off, happy spring. I know we're a couple of days into it now, but I just thought I'd start off with that. I'm excited for spring. It was amazing to go to both Malt B and Hidden River on Friday for school tours. The principals were incredible to take us around and show us some different things that were going, going on. It was great to talk with so many of our teachers and hear about the wonderful things that they're doing, but also to be able to see our pilot program, You Fly, in action with our kindergarteners and just how they're learning phonics and how it is improving overall their ability to spell and, and sound out words and read and do all these things, so really excited to see that. It was definitely a bucket filler. I didn't leave without the joy. And then student recognition, we have lots of students to celebrate. I have a couple pages worth up here, so bear with me. First off, though, we're gonna acknowledge, we have a coach of the year this year in Monroe for three A, two A Northwest Co All League, and it is Coach Justin Prone, who's the varsity coach for boys basketball. And he's just an amazing human being. It's been really fun to get to know him over the past couple of years, so this is a very well-deserved award, and I'm super happy for him and just thankful that he is here to be able to pour into our student athletes and give so much back. So congratulations, Coach Prone. We also have first team All West Coast celebrations, boys basketball. We have Wyatt Prone, Caleb Campbell and Chase Wyatt Keller, all three of whom were absolutely incredible to watch out on that court this year, especially making it all the way to the Tacoma Dome. For girls basketball, we have Hallie Keller and Cascadia Yates. Congratulations. For wrestling, first team All West Co, we have girls Haley Carswell and boys Michael Carpenter and Austin Grenier. So congratulations to you three. Second team All League for boys basketball, we have Kieran Greer. And for girls basketball, we have Hope Keller and Maya Mercille. I think I got that right. I might have messed that up. I'm sorry, Maya, if I got that wrong. But congratulations to you. And then we also have honorable mention for boys basketball, Isaiah Keel. It is not an easy task to get on this list because this is something that is voted on by all coaches, so the fact that we have so many of our student athletes on here is just amazing. I also want to give more shout-outs to our JROTC program. They competed in regionals and they placed fourth overall out of twenty eight schools, which is awesome. We have armed drill and unarmed drill that both placed second out of twelve different schools, so it was the top three best of the best from four different districts that competed in this, so the fact that they got second place is a big deal. We also had Brock Peterson from Monroe High School, who was our unarmed drill team commander that took second place at regionals, so congratulations to you, Brock, and also air rifle sporter team took first place. Congratulations all the way around. Looking forward to see what you all do next. At Sky Valley, we had a student of the quarter at Snow Isle Skill, and that was Jessie Elston in auto body, so I wanted to give a congratulations to Jessie for that accomplishment. Congratulations. And then we have, we had Northwest Regional History Day where these students from Sky Valley spent just hundreds of hours preparing to go do this, and there were so many different people from the community that came and reviewed things that they had done and a lot of effort went into this, but they had Northwest Regionals on Saturday, March fifteenth. Thirty of the students competed and twenty of them took home awards. So I'm going to bring up the awards, the people who got the awards for that here really quick. I forgot to bring it up ahead of time, but here it is. Okay, so junior individual documentary, first place was James Cummings. Junior Historical Performance, second place was Miles Sansoni. Junior Historical Paper, first place went to Scarlett Gilbert and second place went to Kaya Knight. Junior Individual Websites, first place went to Ziva Gonzalez and second place went to Oliver Menelga. Junior Individual Historical Exhibits, first place went to Emma Jean Shaw, second place to Avril Gilbert and fourth place to Joshua Monger. Junior Group Websites, we had third place Daphne Dunells and Avalon Kinder. Senior Individual Exhibit, first place was Bryn Parsons, second place Rainier Johnson, third place Joanna Guthrie. Senior Historical Paper, third place was Adam Graham. And Senior Individual Websites, we had first place Jericho Songstad, second place Emily Cox and third place Alicia Allen. Next, it was senior, senior group websites. We took a first place there with Penelope Dunells and Tyler Fields. So a huge congratulations to all of you students who have worked so hard on this, on this amazing feat. And they next will be headed to state, so I just want to wish you all good luck with that. And last, but certainly not least, we have, of course, our HIQ team that Sophia highlighted. They won state for the fourth time in a row. So I wanted to make sure that I gave a shout out to each and every one of those students who just did an incredible job. We have Daniel Axelson, Ethan Carrillo, Ray Ferguson, Curtis Garrett, Alexi Grenier, Gianmarco Lindsay, Ella Mathewson and Joey Speckio. And I'm so sorry if I got any names wrong. I'm really trying my best up here, but congratulations to all of you. You really represent Monroe School District in an incredible way and we are so very proud of you. Keep up the good work.
All right, so I'd just like to echo, it was great to visit the schools. Last week, we went and saw, it's like Director Barnes mentioned, Hidden River and Malt B, and the week before was Chain Lake, so it was just great to see the students and see the teachers in action. I also wanted to give a huge shout out for the attendance. I know that's been a big focus of this, of the district office and, you know, great job by all the teachers and principals. Can't help students learn if they're not there, so I think that's, that's really good. And then I have a question, some request. We, we talked about how are we going to help students catch up? And then in discussing moving the high school from eight period to six periods, we said we're going to possibly offer more summer programs. It'd be great, and we, of course, we don't have to do this now, but at some point, have a review of where that decision landed. Are we going to start those program, programs up this summer or are we going to go for the summer after? But yeah, just want to get caught up in all that discussion and if we could start it this summer, that'd be great. Maybe we could help. Okay, excellent. That'd be wonderful. Thank you. And that's all.
Just want to echo, we've been having really great school visits. Thank you to all of the principals and all the teachers, but especially the kids in our thirty-second dance. Stop, drop and roll dancing. Our superintendent forgot to mention that he did do the robot during his thirty seconds of dancing. I missed it because it's happening right behind me, but that's because I was boogying down with Molly over here. All right, it is five forty-six PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.